And if the clerk could take the role, please.
Commissioner Look.
Here.
Commissioner Brassad.
Here.
Commissioner Cordia.
Here.
Commissioner Severajah.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Gamash.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
First item is review of checks issued from Finance and Central Services and from Human Services. Is there motion to approve? So moved. There's a second.
Second.
Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Then we have approval of the minutes from the February 13th County Board meeting. Is there motion to approve?
So moved.
There's a second.
Second.
Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We have three items under Chair's remarks today. Recently, we completed a long overdue construction project in the courthouse to improve safety and security for judges, the staff, the public, and the defendants. This was not an easy project at all, but it was truly a team effort between the courts and the county. Joining us this morning is Honorable Daniel O'Fallon and the Honorable Barry Sullivan to talk about our partnership and Court Administrator Lori O'Brien with a special recognition of our facility management staff for their efforts before, during, and after the construction phase. Judge O'Fallon and Judge Sullivan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Barry Sullivan, Chair of the Anoka Bench, Madam Chair, and Commissioners. When I first got here, I thought you had some kind of protest on your hands.[130.11][130.11](Laughter). Turns out not to be the case. We want to thank you for the opportunity to address you this morning and to express our appreciation for the project that was just completed and more than that for the ongoing relationship that we're having with you and the county to be good stewards of the county facilities and to take the efforts that are necessary to, as you say, protect the public, protect the participants. And this was a big project, and Judge O'Fallon can talk a little bit more about all the involvement, but it was a big project. It's up and running, the kinks have been worked out, and it's a vast improvement. So we want to thank you. We know when it comes to being good stewards of the county, that includes being good stewards of the county's finances and that you have many competing claims. There's lots of places you could spend money, and you are spending money on that courthouse. We appreciate it. We wish to have a good working relationship, a collaborative working relationship with you now going forward. Part of the project is not just the work, but it's building relationships, building communications and networking with people, and that's very successful, I think, and really appreciate it. So I want to take that time to do that. So let's ask Judge O'Fallon if he might talk a little bit as well, okay? Thank you.
Madam Chair, Board members, what was it about? Three and a half, four years ago that I was up here and we were talking about this building project. And at the time, I think, I'm not sure we could all see what it would look like in the end, but we knew we had a lot of work ahead of us. I will say throughout that process, it has been just a delight to work with you and to work with your staff. I see Jerry wear a tie today. Thank you, Jerry.[244.31][244.31](Laughter). And Andrew, and really all the folks here. I mean, you guys have been patient with us, and as we worked through this process, I mean, any building process is a big undertaking. Doing a building process when you're also trying to conduct court presented a lot of unique challenges. But you know, every time that we asked guys to put down hammers, or we called Jerry or Andrew and said, you know, can you give us a little break here? We got this going on, we got that going on, there was never hesitation to help out. And by the same token, I think, you know, when we said, hey, when they said to us, hey, we need a little break here, can you kind of schedule away from us? I think we tried to do it. The result, I think, is relatively spectacular. If you've come over and looked at our facilities now, the ones that, they're your facilities, actually, we just use them, they really work out, and the functionality is amazing. Courtroom 300 works so much better than the old matter did. I think from everybody involved, we're hearing that from our justice partners, we're hearing it from the attorneys, we're hearing it, we're hearing it from the folks that are in there who've maybe been there before and said, this is a lot better. Part of it with all that security and the way we move people through now too, it's reduced the tension in that area. We're hearing that through the bailiffs and that the people are a little more calmed out. Again, no one wants to be incarcerated, and no one wants to be in that particular situation, but it really has made a difference. I've had the opportunity to try a couple of cases in the completely technological courtroom, and it works great. It really does. And you can see it with the jurors, you can see it with the parties, I mean, their involvement, you know, and the reality is, right, I mean, we all remember the days, I think, yeah, I think we all remember the days when you use paper in a courtroom. But you know, the reality is that so many of the people coming in, I mean, they're used to video technology, they're used to things being done like this, and it's really been great. And you know, it doesn't even, it now seems like it took place a long time ago, and yet that's not true. We've only been up and running for a few months, but it seems like we've been there forever, which I think is a testament to the design and to how it works. And I just want to thank all these folks, you know, we see them on a regular basis when we make a call or something needs fixed, and I just want you to know that we appreciate what you do and that you respond to us and that you take care of us. And so for you, for that, thank all of you.
Where are you?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, county officials, judges, and of course, facilities. I'm going to speak mostly to these guys, so don't mean to be turning my back, but you know, from custodial staff to maintenance staff to office support staff, all the way up to the professional level staff in facilities, what a great partnership, and we appreciate you, and we need you to know that we appreciate you, not just during the construction phase, but on a daily basis. You put up with our many demands. Whenever we call, you're there, whether it's cleaning, general maintenance, a temperature issue, a water leak, a major event such as that, you're responsive, you listen to our concerns. We never hear no. We don't hear, no, we can't do that, that's a silly idea. You work with us, you're as, you know, you treat us as a true partner and as a true customer, and you really listen to our concerns and you help us find those solutions. And we have had the major issues, you've been on site within seconds, or for sure within minutes, and working side by side with us to keep us informed, to hold meetings, to keep us updated on the status of the project, on the cause of the project, and those are just true partnership communication issues and things that we appreciate. You know, on a daily basis, the custodial staff is great. I can't say enough about how responsive they are to any concerns that we have, and I just, we appreciate that. I know that we put in a lot of work orders, and we feel that you are consistent and courteous, just always. We've never had any experience otherwise. And I, when I was looking at your mission statement, it says, "To provide a safe, clean, comfortable, and well-maintained environment at the highest standard of excellence for the citizens and employees of Anoka County." I would say you accomplished your mission. You provide a clean, safe, and well-maintained facility, and we appreciate you, we appreciate that partnership, we appreciate the collaboration, like I said, during the construction phase and on a daily basis. So in recognition of that appreciation, we have a certificate for you. So it says, "From the Minnesota Judicial Branch, the certificate is awarded to Anoka County Facilities in recognition and appreciation of your service to the Anoka County Courthouse and Anoka District Court Staff." Presented this, this February 27th.[564.16][564.16](Applause). Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Cordia.
Good comment, Madam Chair, thank you. First of all, it's with great proud enthusiasm I confront the facilities group today. I see many of you walk in our halls every single day, and comments you just made certainly support everything that I think about you. I know that each of you have unique skills, some are plumbers and carpenters and keylock people, and you are well adept at your services and you serve all the needs of Anoka County. I really appreciate, and we really appreciate, the work that you do on behalf, our behalf every single day. We hope you find Andrew to be an effective leader of your crew. I think he, talking to him, he approaches you with great enthusiasm, and I think that this board has great respect for what Andrew does, and it's because of you that he can get it done, and we appreciate that. I'll comment to the board too, I really appreciate the fact that you, although as hard as this board has worked to avoid bonding, kind of a curse word around here, they recognize the need that we had in the court facility. We saw the long-term benefit of that. We recognize the interest that we have in working closely with our bench and the population that you serve, and I really accredit our board in cooperation with you and your participation that's great, but hopefully is a lot, we know, will be a lasting impact in this county that will last for decades, I'm sure. So we all have to be so happy with the outcome. I've walked those halls, I've been in it, used to as a participant, not an occupant, but I'm just very pleased with everything that this board has done, that our staff has done, and the court's involvement with that, just a very positive story, and I thank you all. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Comments?
Just a couple of quick comments first. Andrew must swell with pride that somebody could say his mission statement for him.[684.73][684.73](Laughter). Normally, I hear Andrew say that a couple of times a week anyways, and I'm thrilled that it's out there. I'm thrilled that your staff, Andrew, has done what they've done to live out that mission statement, and it's evidence from the comments today that your leadership is working. And then I would like to comment to Judge O'Fallon that, you know, he slipped up at one point and said, "Come over and see our facilities."[710.44][710.44](Laughter). That's thrilling, that's important, that the tenants within Anoka County's facilities, wherever they are, feel like it's theirs and feel like they have a huge part in it, because a court's remodel wouldn't have happened without the cooperation of the bench. And everyone talked about how challenging it was, we have no idea how challenging it was unless you're sitting in one of those courtrooms trying to do something with a jackhammer going in the background. So thank you for your patience during the process, each and every one of the judges on the bench, and all of their staff as well. I couldn't be prouder that this happened during my tenure here at Anoka County, and again, I hope the cooperation doesn't end there. I hope we continue to work to maintain our facilities and make a better, safer facility for all the public.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Locke.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment, it does seem like a long time ago since this project, for whatever reason, it just seems like time has passed, but you know, to the staff, you guys have a world-class team, world-class team, and that doesn't necessarily come from us, that comes from you guys, that comes from inside you, and the fact that you want to do, everything you do, you want to do with pride, and that shows in whether it's cleaning, or you know, coordinating construction, or whatever the issue is, or responding to needs that are out there, it's absolutely phenomenal, and I think it's really created just a culture of, an awesome culture within, and I know that it brings up everybody that you interact with on a daily basis, so thank you for that, and thank you for a great project.
Eddie House.
Well, I would just say thank you to Judge O'Fallon and Judge Sullivan, as well as Administrator Lori O'Brien. Just appreciate the incredible partnership that we have developed in the course of this project, and you know, to see the courtroom before, I think a lot of us were quite disturbed just the way that it was set up, and looking at the safety issue, it definitely needed to be addressed, and then to see the result and the finished product is really something I think all of us can be very proud of, and certainly makes for a much more positive working environment for everyone. So I want to thank you for your patience. I know that it has been a long time coming, but it is nice to be able to really celebrate this with you and look forward to a long and lasting partnership moving into the future. And thank you for taking the time to recognize each and every one of these incredible individuals who work so hard to make sure that they are the, carrying out the mission, but also just that focus on customer service that they have. You know, so many times, I think the general public can be critical of government, and I would say they need to come and see what each of you do every day, because you really do provide that service that is a cut above what anyone would ever imagine. So I just really appreciate each and every one of you and the effort that you put forth to do your best and come in each and every day. You know, we have good days and we have bad days, but anytime we run into any of you, you're always, you know, greet someone with a smile and a hello, and again, just really appreciate that extra effort that you make, to make a positive impact for the citizens of Anoka County. So again, congratulations on a job well done, and thank you so much for your great work. I think they deserve a round of applause.[955.23][955.23](Applause).
Thank you. Now, our second item. The face of hunger today isn't necessarily what one might expect. Often, it's working families, seniors, or even college students. The Minnesota Food Share March Campaign is the largest food and fun drive in the state, and locally, the Community Emergency Assistance Program, otherwise known as SEEP, is one agency playing a vital role in ensuring that individuals and families in crisis have access to healthy, nutritious foods. Joining us to tell us more about the campaign and their mission is Rachel Hickok, Director of Development for SEEP. Rachel?
Thank you, Madam Chair and the board, for allowing us the opportunity to share with the community the important role that SEEP plays and the critical need for support in March. I'm joined today by Pat Morley, our Director of Family Services for Anoka County, and I just wanted to share a little bit with you about what SEEP is doing in our community and why March in particular is so important to our food shelf. SEEP was founded in 1970 by a group of neighbors who recognized that there were needs in our community that weren't being met, and that ideal of neighbors helping neighbors lives on today. We expanded our services into Anoka County in 1989, and we serve the entire Anoka County region out of our offices in the Blaine Human Services Building. We believe in propelling each other forward in better physical and financial health. SEEP is a part of a network of community food shelves that are often the first line of support for families in crisis in Anoka County. Our services ensure families are able to eat well as they deal with the uncertain financial times, whether that be underemployment, unemployment, caring for a sick loved one, or something else entirely. These services keep families stable. March is a critical time for SEEP. A portion of what we raise in the month of March will be matched by Minnesota Food Share, and both monetary and food donations count towards this goal. Even more, for every dollar that someone donates to SEEP, we have the ability to procure five to eight dollars worth of food. This is the month where we ask the community to rally around the food shelf. In our Blaine location, we serve on average 500 families a month with few overarching values. In a time when life is most difficult, we provide warm connections to the families who need it most. This means we have appointments where we sit with each family and talk about what's going on in their world, because we know that hunger is a symptom of much greater struggles, and we do our best to connect them to financial stability that they are struggling to achieve. SEEP has an extensive network of community partners that we work with to help stabilize families. This means creating great relationships within the community. We aren't simply telling people, "Visit this agency," we're telling them, "Visit Sue, and you'll find her here, and ask about this particular program." We're a place of joy. It's the little things, whether it's fresh produce from a community garden, or layettes provided by a local congregation, or a basket full of special foods at the holidays. It's the little things that make a big difference when you're struggling. We're also a center for health. We provide recipes for healthy meals on a budget, break food shelf norms to provide as much fresh and healthy food as possible, and collaborate with innovative local organizations that can help us get healthy food into the hands of people who need it in new ways. Just a little bit about some of those special programs. As a driver for healthy living, we acknowledge that we are the center of the struggles to improve America's, the American family diet and combat obesity and co-occurring health conditions. On average, it costs a family $2,000 more a year to incorporate fresh produce, lean meats, and whole grains into their diets. This is money that our participants simply do not have. This is why our food shelf programming is so important. We've embraced food rescue to provide more produce for families, and where our rescue may fall short, we buy it so we ensure our families get the fresh food they need to improve their overall health. NAPA is one particularly special program in the world of creating partnerships to improve their health. We were approached by Alina Health to pilot a program where healthcare providers could provide direct referral services to community resources. Through an innovative software program, Alina clinicians are able to directly provide referrals to families, reducing the intake process and helping us better understand the needs from the second they walk through our doors. We also share space with Salvation Army to ensure that people are getting emergency housing assistance, and we also offer a variety of transportation solutions to help people maintain employment when transportation might get in their way. As I noted, approximately 60% of the food that leaves our food shelf is healthy food. It's the fresh food, produce, whole grains, dairy, meat, bread, and more. Last year, we distributed over 300,000 pounds of food from our Blaine offices, and we allow recipients to come back up to two additional times in the month, so it's not just a one and done, see you, you're on your way. We're helping people along the way and saying, "Come back if you, when you need more bread, come back when you need more produce, because we want you to be able to eat well the entire March Food Share, as I mentioned, is a critical time for us. We rely on the community's support to fund our day-to-day operations. Both financial and food contributions count towards the match from the Minnesota Food Share Fund. Cash donations are critical to supporting our operations. Not only do we have greater food purchasing power than one would find in the grocery store, but we also use these funds to keep our refrigerators running and provide resources to help families navigate their situation and find the help they need to move forward. The hungry leaf community has enjoyed wonderful attention over the past months, particularly as the Super Bowl was celebrated in Minneapolis. However, these programs were largely to benefit our food bank partners, and although their work is valuable asset to our community and worthy of support, this is the time of year where we ask our neighbors to rally around their direct service providers, the food shelf. It is your local food shelf that catches families before they fall, holds them carefully, and propels them forward in a meaningful way. There are many ways that people can support SEEP this month. First, they can make a financial donation on our website, and all donations are greatly appreciated and widely used to stretch our, and those donations stretch further in this month with that generous matching gift. We also have the opportunity to join us, we'll be at two Cub Foods stores on March 24th as a part of our annual Feed the Needs celebration. All total across SEEP's service area will be nine stores, and we use that day as one and opportunity to share what's happening in our community and tell people that we're here locally to support them, but also to stock our food shelves, and we, our goal is to raise 15,000 pounds of food in just a few hours. And also, we have a fun event on April 7th called End Hunger or Bust, and you can come and eat all the spaghetti that you can fill your tummies with, and we would love to have you at that event as well. These are just a few ways people can get involved, but I would encourage anybody to give us a call or look onto our website for more opportunities for volunteering and connecting into our work, because as I mentioned, this organization, and what makes it special is it's about neighbors helping neighbors. So we have a very small staff at SEEP, so we cannot do this work without the many generous hands that make our work possible. Thank you for your time and your support.
Thank you so much for the work that your organization does and really helping to provide that safety net within the community for our friends and neighbors. And I'd also like to encourage everyone to participate in the Minnesota Food Share March Campaign to restock our local food shelves. As you know, SEEP is one of our food shelves, but we have many others also scattered throughout Anoka County as well. To learn more about the Community Emergency Assistance Program and how to donate, you can visit their website at www.seep.org. And Commissioner Cordia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate your comments, Rachel. I wish you the very best of success. You and I talked briefly earlier, and I recognize that every dollar that someone does contribute, you mentioned five times, I said three, but you can make a lot more out of every dollar that is contributed, and we certainly hope that you have great success stocking your shelves.
Thank you.
I think more importantly though, as we talked, the issue is really much broader than feeding you today. I mean, the issue is feeding you in the long term, servicing your life, reorganizing your life to put you into a better place, and I think that the food shelves are important first step in that discussion. You may end up there first because you're hungry today, but you better have an idea about what resources are out there to help people with the broader issues of GED and transportation and mental health and childcare and all those many things that really have led them to a position of hunger, quite frankly. I had the opportunity the other day to talk to legal women voters at a church in Columbia Heights about the subject of homelessness. I went on a journey through our county housing people, and it led me to the Anoka County Collaborative, and it led me to Salvation Army, it led me to comments that we made that night, and I really, I learned an awful lot about the homelessness issue, even though I sat on the Human Services Board for 12 years going through those many things. When you confront it, I ball, well, eyeball, it's a rather interesting discussion, quite frankly, and you see it very up close, and this really is an important step in that. I had the opportunity to, and I visited the Anoka County Collaborative. We may have heard of that term, but this is a group of entities, community organizations that deal with housing and homelessness issues. They come together once every single month at St. Tim's Church, they meet collectively, they talk about the issues, they talk about the services they offer, they talk about the point where they make connections, they talk about how you reach out and help to rebuild people's lives. I was fascinated by that, because there's, I didn't know all that was going on, churning away in the background, trying to reach out and serve the needs of people, but I just thought it might broaden the discussion, quite frankly. This many times, maybe a first step. I know my local food shelf had done things over there at Saka many, many times over there, as so many of my citizens do, we support and volunteer our time there by the loans, but there is a great public support for what you do, and I wish you the very best of luck in whatever you're pursuing today in your March program.
Thank you.
Yes, we had a comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to comment that in 1970, I was a senior in high school, and one of my best friend's mother was one of those neighborhood ladies, Madeleine Roach, and she engaged us in it, you know. I think they were doing some domestic abuse stuff back then, and she even engaged us, seniors in high school, in counseling to learn to counsel, and it is just amazing to see where it's come, and I'd just like to commend you and your colleagues for the part you play in creating this very, very important outsider government organization. So, good job, and it's very fun to see this. Didn't expect to be sitting here at that time, but.
Well, just the vision that some of those who have come before us had to look at meeting those needs within the community, so again, thank you so much, appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our third and final item is I'm happy to announce that our Well at Work Clinic expansion is complete. Because the clinic was so successful, often exceeding the maximum number of daily appointments, many employees expressed their concerns about not being able to get into the clinic. Last October, this board supported the expansion of the Well at Work Clinic by adding another nurse practitioner to provide more appointment hours. Central Services Director Bill Keller is here to tell us more. Bill?
Thank you and good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Bill Keller, I'm your Central Services Director here at Anoka County. I'm excited to be here today to announce the open house of the Well at Work Clinic, but before I do so, I would first like to thank a few people. First of all, you, the board, for supporting this effort and getting it up and running. I would also like to thank our partners in employee relations, Mike, Candace, and Steph. I would also, even though this wasn't the same type of coordination as we saw in the courts, I would also like to thank our facilities management staff who helped coordinate courts, I would also like to thank our Facilities Management Staff who helped coordinate and work around the clinic hours to be able to get this done as well, too. And that would be Jerry, Daryl, Lynn. And then lastly, I would like to thank Cory for his support and guidance in getting this done as well, too. Secondly, prior to the start of the project, we were seeing a steady increase in utilization of the Well at Work Clinic, as you mentioned, Commissioner Severaja, to the point where employees and their families had to wait two to three days to get in, into an appointment. And in fact, in 2017, we reached an average of 15.6 appointments per day with a maximum of 16 appointments to be able to be seen per day, which actually led into Jana actually seeing sometimes 17, 18, 19, and 20 people in a given time period. She made that time available to do that. So, by expanding the clinic, this will allow us up to 54 additional visits per week, same-day appointments, which is important, an estimated savings of between $200,000 and $400,000 annually in utilization costs, and an estimated savings of 5,600 hours of, annually of absenteeism, which will allow for people to work more and be more productive, as well, and then, and lastly, an increase in promoting our wellness program and managing some of those chronic conditions that some of us have. Lastly, all of you asked us to try and find somebody very similar to Jana. It wasn't an easy task, but I think through some searching, I am here to tell you that we did find Erin Wilkinson, and she joined us in this expansion when it was completed on January 2nd of this year. Those skills Jana has that we love, we think Erin also has those as well, too. To name a few, Jana listens to her patients and what they have to say. So does Erin. Jana goes above and beyond to make sure that her patients get the, get what they need, not necessarily what they want. So does Erin. Jana also allows, follows up in a timely manner. So does Erin. And so, we are, so I am inviting all of you, the commissioners, as well as county staff, to join us at the Well at Work Open House located in the clinic from 10 o'clock to noon today to meet Erin, to pick up some information, and to see some of the changes that we have made down there. I think you will find that Jana and Erin will be a great fit and will continue to provide that exceptional service that we've already seen out of that clinic. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Bill, and thank you to everyone involved for your hard work and effort, and finding someone like Jana is a very difficult task, and we have been so blessed to have her. And, you know, she really has gone above and beyond, so it's nice to be able to get her some help down there, so excited for that. And just a reminder to all staff, be sure to stop down between 10 and noon and check out the open house.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you. Now, we will move on to committee reports. The first is Management Committee Report. Commissioner West.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will say that the items on my agenda are informational only, and that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll move on to Transportation Committee Report. Commissioner Schulte.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our committee met February 15th, 9:00 here in the Government Center, and we have three items for your attention. All should be pretty straightforward and simple. First, the committee recommends approval of a resolution authorizing the sale of excess right-of-way on Lake Drive in the city of Lino Lakes to Kirk and Nan Corson, who are the adjacent property owners.
I will offer the resolution. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordyak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next items.
And Madam Chair, item two and three are very similar with only the names changed. I won't say to protect the innocent, because I don't want to do with it, but two different contract numbers, one with Miller Wenhold Capital Strategies and one with John Brimsick, both of the Virginia area, and we use them for our federal lobbying, particularly on highway issues, but for other things as well. So, that's why it's coming through our Transportation Committee. It's, I'm going to actually read the first one, so I won't read the second one, because they say the same thing, but it's for a purchase of service agreement for professional service to assist with public affairs relating to the designation of federal discretionary highway funds for improvements to United States Highway 10, interstates 35, 35W, and 35E, and to the national highway system, which includes Trunk Highway 65, and I believe it also includes a portion of County Route 14.
That's correct.
Those corridors, and the highway railroad grade separation projects, and then any other transportation projects that may impact us. Each of those contracts are worth $60,000 apiece, and I would move approval of both of those contracts.
Okay. Items two and three have been moved and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Cordyak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Madam Chair, the rest of my report is informational in nature. I will say, however, that the, the actual men are on the job site on the County Route 14 land bridge project. They are currently assessing how long it's going to take them to do the project, so we don't have a completion date for the temporary repairs yet. We're still hoping for first part of April to have that back open, but I think that's a hope, not a, not a for-sure set and concrete answer yet. So, but they are, they are there today digging and jackhammering and figuring out what their process is. We'll be sure to keep the public informed as best we can via our website and board meetings and the like. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Now, we'll move on to Finance and Capital Improvements Committee Report. Commissioner Look.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Finance and Capital Improvements Committee met on February 20th. We came away with one action item, which is the county, the committee recommends the county board approved contract, see 006075 with Minnesota Roadways out of Shakopee for the completion of the 2018 chip seal pavement project in an amount not to exceed $148,940. You'll note that, well, first of all, this project is a project we implemented because it preserves the life of driveways that we have out there, roadways. And as we all know, replacing those are very costly, but this particular motion would include the Sheriff's Office, Blaine Human Service Center, the Fairgrounds, Government Center loading dock, Ed Start Building, Highway Parks Department site, libraries, Crooked Lake Library, Mississippi Library, North Town Library, Rum River Library, Lino Lakes, the Medical Examiner's Office in the Rum River campus, which has some ituminous repair as well in there. So, as you can see, it's not a small undertaking. Based on the amount of work, you'd think it might be more, but we've got excellent value on this, and, and I'll go ahead and move it.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordyak.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Madam Chair, just under the informational items there, we did consider presentation of the Facilities Management Construction Long-Term Plan, the 10-year plan that feeds the 5-year plan that feeds the annual plan.
[laughing]
And, but, you know, it is a plan that I think allows us to schedule some of the things that need to be done. We can foresee them happening in the future, we can start budgeting for them, we can make sure that they're planned for from a financial standpoint, and, and everything gets taken care of in its time. And, and I think from a facilities management standpoint, that's an excellent way to manage all of our resources at the county, and I want to commend Andrew for, for coming forward with this plan and everyone for supporting it. So, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. Now, we'll move on to Human Services Committee Report. We have a few items. The first is to consider recommending the county board submit a Pathways to Prosperity Competitive Grant Application to the Department of Employment and Economic Development in an amount of $650,000 from March 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2020, and that will allow us to work with individuals to really develop those career pathways in some of those high demand fields. Is there a motion to approve?
I move.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordyak.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is to consider recommending the county board provide a written statement of support with rationale for a non-residential chemical dependency treatment program to be operated by People Incorporated Family Life Mental Health Center at 1930 Coon Rapids Boulevard in Coon Rapids. As you may recall, Family Life is now part of People Inc., and they have provided throughout the years a lot of mental health services, but they've recognized that many times the chemical dependency piece goes hand in hand, and so this allows them the opportunity to be able to apply to DHS to be able to do that. So, I will move approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Motion carries. The next is Resolution 2018 HS3, the Economic Assistance Bills. I'll offer that resolution. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordyak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then Resolution 2018 HS4, really going back to the presentation we had earlier, proclaiming March as National Nutrition Month in Anoka County, so it definitely goes hand in hand, and I will offer that resolution. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Motion carries. For informational, I just wanted to let all of you know that this past week, we had the opportunity, staff from the Economic Assistance Department, as well as Cindy Caesar and Brad Thiel, who actually oversees the Economic Assistance Department, had an opportunity to sit down with some folks from the Department of Human Services, as well as IBM, who developed, who has the Curum System, which is the MET system, which operates MinSure. So, it's, you know, how, as we've heard about all of the problems that our staff have had with the MET system and the challenges that clients have had, they came out to sit down with our workers and see firsthand what they were experiencing in order to try to identify potential solutions. I sat in with workers, I think it was probably over a year ago, and I just have to tell you, I was pretty alarmed that even though there have been a number of efforts made and certainly some improvements within the system, it is not near where it needs to be. I had the opportunity years ago to work in that department, and in the old system, if you wanted to change an address, you would do it on one, on one screen, you'd wait for results, and you'd approve the results to shut that case if they were moving out of state. For our workers now, it was 37-plus steps, going between three different systems, having to manually select which notification the client would get, manually enter the address for each and every individual in the household separately, and it took, and this was a trainer that did it, so it took about 35 minutes. So, the staff time that is being spent for a system that is clearly non-functional is certainly quite disturbing. As you may recall, we ordered, we actually added 21 positions within that department, and I just have to say, I give credit to each and every one of those workers each day because it has to be so incredibly frustrating. I don't think that I could have lasted sitting there working in that environment, knowing that there are things that you need to be able to close, the system won't allow you to close. So, certainly a lot of challenges, and you see any of the folks that work in that department, give them a word of encouragement, because they really are doing incredible work in very, very difficult circumstances, and unfortunately, there doesn't seem to be any solution in sight. So, that is my update on, on, just appreciate, I think our staff did an incredible job in really laying out all the facts and doing in a, in a very positive way, but really highlighting what the issues were, so I want to, want to thank you for all of your hard work in, in doing that. All right, now, we will move on to Information Technology Committee Report. Commissioner Gamash.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The committee met on February 15th, and we, just one item was informational only. It's our annual report, which is important, and kind of following up with Commissioner Severaja's comments just a minute ago regarding technology that is not working well. I would put this group of IT people [laughing] up against anything that the state's able to produce, but we've got some key themes that they've been working on this year, and just want to touch base quickly and then on a couple of subjects, and then Susan can add on. But right now, they currently revolve, the themes currently revolve around innovation, adaptability, reliability, collaboration, and information security. Everybody understands information security is vital for all the different important records that we have of the public, and so it's, it's a vital part of our, our ongoing program. So, looking forward to what we're working on this year, we've got a couple of large initiatives going on. Obviously, the imaging for our Human Services Division is continuing, and then, of course, the Attorney's Case Management System, which we just had an issue with just this weekend to try to work on that program, because of the fact that that is a current system that is just out of date and it needs to be changed. So, we had a number of people in your, on your staff, and I believe in the Attorney's Office, working the entire weekend to get things up and running, so great teamwork, but it's unfortunate they had to work a whole weekend. But those are, those are two of the major things that we'll be working on this year, along with accomplishment of this year was, one of the big ones was the new phone system, which you've heard a lot about. But I'll let Susan continue and add anything else, or take any questions that you might have. Again, if we had this, this IT team working on some of the things that comes from the state, I don't think we would have half the problems that we have, and we'd probably be much quicker at getting things done, but that's just my opinion. Susan?
Thank you, Commissioner Gamash. Madam Chair and members of the board, I'm Susan Vreeland, the Director of Information Technology, and the last couple of years, we've put together this report. It's kind of a snapshot of not everything that we've accomplished, but some examples in different areas of some of what I would call the key things, and we try to accomplish a couple of things with that. I think it gives us an opportunity for us to share with our users and our county partners and leadership, again, a little snapshot of what we try to accomplish during a year. For my staff, it gives us, I think, an opportunity to take a moment and kind of reflect upon what we do. A lot of our work is kind of painting the Golden Gate Bridge. You get to the end and you're kind of starting all over again, so this kind of forces them to sit back and say, "Before we get moving on the next thing, let's, let's congratulate ourselves a little bit." And I think most importantly, it gives us the opportunity to share how we do and what we do with our most important customer, and that's our citizens. A lot of what we do so often focuses on the bits and bytes and the technology, but really what it's about is how does it impact the people we serve? And so, we're continuing to also focus this year and next on services that we can provide that impact the public, because that's really a lot of what we're here for. So, with that, I thank you for your leadership, I thank you for your partnership, I thank you for your support. A lot of what we do requires some significant funding, and sometimes there's tough questions around that, I appreciate that. Helps us validate what we do, and that's the right thing to do, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Susan, and I know that it does cost a lot of money to do some of the things that we're doing, and, but it is there to help the people that work in Anoka County work quicker, and that leads back to the residents who are expecting us to keep up with the standards that are in, in the world right now with different things from your telephones, doing stuff on the phone and computer that you could do quickly and, and get those types of things done. So, we can see with MinLars, all the problems that they've been having, and the issues that residents have to wait, and those are the things that I know our staff has worked hard to do the best we can in those areas, but our IT team is working hard to make sure that our residents don't have to wait. Thank you, Madam Chair. I will then convene the public hearing. The chair has just stated to obtain comments concerning the Anoka, changes to the Anoka County Solid Waste Hauler Licensing Ordinance. And I would ask the clerk to take note. Public hearing notice was published on February 16th, 2018, in the county's official newspaper. And at this time, I would call on staff to come forward and brief the, the board on the summary of the changes to this ordinance, if you would. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, board members, thank you. My name is Dan Disrude, and I'm the Environmental Health Services Manager of the Community Health and Environmental Services Department. At the beginning of the year, the regional participation in the shared hauler licensing organization through the Solid Waste Management Coordinating Board ceased, with intent to continue those functions through a new joint powers agreement and organization structure through a new hauler regional licensing board. Our current hauler licensing ordinance was passed in 1995 and refers to the SWIMCLUB, the Solid Waste Management Coordinating Board, that is no longer in effect. Revisions are needed to replace reference to the old coordination board with the newly-formed regional board. Additional changes to the ordinance include the license term change from one year to every two years, and alignment of business practices and current statutory requirements. We are asking your consideration for approval of cleaning up the language, as well as the correct reference to the Regional Hauler Board, and again, as mentioned, the public notice was, was properly followed.
Thank you, Mr. Disrude. Does the board have any questions, Mr. Disrude, about the ordinance? Okay.
Just one, if I can.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Can I presume that all of the different counties will have the very same resolution, that they all look pretty much the same, they'll practice the same way, we're working together as a region?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Cordiak, board members, yes, the intent is to have alignment.
Of each of the counties.
But again, as far as the other boards and what they actually approve as far as their ordinance is, I'm not aware of where they are.
I assume that's the case, but thank you.
Any other questions? This time, I would then open it up for public comment. Any members of the public wish to come forward and address the proposed changes? Any member of the public wish to come forward? And I will ask a third time if there are any member of the public, please come forward and want to address changes. All right, seeing none at this time, I would then close the hearing and turn the matter back to the, to the board. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Now, we will move on to, because there's no action item on that particular item today, we will move on to item number nine. Consider approving Contract C-0006335, Employment Agreement with Chuck Gitsin for Services as the Anoka County Surveyor's Office Department Head, and appointing Chuck as the Anoka County Surveyor for a four-year term beginning March 30th, 2018, to March 30th, 2022.
Move approval? Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations. Chuck, would you like to come up and say something? And as many of you may know, that Larry Hoyum has served our county very well for many years in that position.
Thirty.
Thirty years.
Yeah. Thank you.
And so certainly wish you the very best on your retirement, and sorry to see you go, but know that you have groomed Chuck, and he, and we are in good hands moving forward. And again, congratulations on your upcoming retirement.
Thank you very much.
Chuck?
I'd just like to take, take this opportunity to thank the board for giving me this opportunity to serve the county in a, a new role, and I'm excited to, after Larry retires, take this. And I would second your, Larry's been a good person to work for, so thank you again.
Commissioner?
I've only heard good things about Chuck and his services to Anoka County already, and he's been with us for a while, and I think we're looking forward to transition. Wasn't a word I heard seamless. Welcome aboard again.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right.
Madam Chair, I'd just take two seconds to make a quick comment. I had the opportunity this weekend to be a part of an event for Special Olympics to raise money, and there were two divisions from Anoka County that took place, or that took part in the event. There may have been more employee groups, but the two that I recognized, one was the Sheriff's Office, and I wanted to thank them for their involvement and their leadership in that, in that event. But then also, our highway division was out there, all dressed in their, their bright, high-visibility clothing. If you haven't had a chance to, to watch it sometime, you really should, but I don't recommend standing too close to those highway guys. They're all six and a half foot tall. I felt like a kid standing there. Excellent. Thanks for being there, and thanks for representing Anoka County so well. It was a great event, and it was fun to be a part of it.
Well, and Commissioner, it was fun to see the pictures of you in your full suit, taking the plunge as well, so thank you for your participation in doing that. I have had the chance to go and watch in the past, and don't know that I would be brave enough to take that plunge, but appreciate you doing that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure brave is correct. There are other words, brave is not.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Well, roll call, we already did roll call.
Yes.
Yep, so again, congratulations, Chuck. Now, we have a few committee appointments. We will take all of them together, 10 A, B, and C. The first is reappointing Brian Lindberg as County Attorney Representative to the Community Corrections Advisory Board. Next is appointing Charles Penneke as the Community Health Representative to the Adult Mental Health Advisory Committee, and reappointing Jerry Peterson to the Anoka County Community Action Program, representing the public sector. Is there a motion to approve items 10 A, B, and C?
Tum.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Right. And if there's nothing else to come before the county board, meeting is adjourned.